And I will second.
As long as you're cool with that.
Yep. Unless anybody else is jumping to have a chance. Okay, then. Roll call.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Methman.
Yes.
And Carrier.
Abstain. So for one abstention. Need a motion for the Vice President. Craig, are you willing?
Um, Better, you know, Galen.
Uh huh.
I think it would be a good oppor- I'm not demanding it or anything. It'd be a good opportunity for me to learn more.
Yep, I'm at the motion for Galen. I'm sorry I interrupted you.
No, 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 that's okay. We're going down the same road.
I'll second it.
So Craig and Mindha. For Galen. Okay, roll call.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Methman.
Yes.
Carrier.
Carrier.
Yes.
You want to abstain, right?
Abstain.
He has to abstain.
Do I or does he?
You.
You do because you're reading the nomination, but.
I don't know that you have to, but.
I don't, I don't think you have to either.
We'll abstain.
That works.
Okay. Legislative liaison to OSB. I think I've done it last couple of years. I'm, I'll pass. I'll let somebody else have it.
I did twenty twenty.
I can do that. I'll go. If we have something, I'll go.
If we have an opportunity. Okay, I'll appoint Mindha.
I'll second.
So Jen and Galen. Roll call.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes, I'll abstain.
Mather.
Yes.
Methman.
Yes.
And Carrier.
Yes. Four with one abstention. Um, appoint a student achievement liaison.
I did that last year and we never, I never got called once because of all the other stuff and.
That was just a crazy year.
Yeah.
What?
I know.
Do it again?
Well, I can because I'm here in town and available, but you know, if you need something.
Okay. Is that, that's, is that the athletic side of it too?
No, no.
You're still doing the athletic side, Steph?
As far as I know.
We haven't got there yet, Jen.
Yeah, we're not there yet. Yeah, because I did the academic one for two years, but still.
And I've done it just because I'm available at that time, which is fine.
And we appreciate that.
We never did anything last year, so yeah.
So who's nominating Mindha?
I'll nominate Mindha.
Craig.
I'll second.
Okay, Jen second.
Jen?
To appoint Mindha as the student achievement liaison. Want to take roll call.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Abstain.
Mather.
Yes.
Methman.
Yes.
And Carrier.
Yes. For with one abstention to appoint Athletic Council, need a motion.
I'll move to appoint Steph.
Okay, Mindha is appointing Steph.
I'll second.
Craig for the second. Roll call.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Abstain.
Methman.
Yes.
And Carrier.
Yes. We need an appointment for the tax incentive review committee.
That's Keith, right?
Pick me, pick me. My favorite meeting of the year.
So we'll take that. Did Mindha say it first?
Sure.
Doesn't matter.
Mindha and Craig, did I hear? To appoint Keith. For the tax incentive review committee and, um, roll call.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Methman.
Yes.
And Carrier.
Yes. Uh, next we have the four county board. I did speak with, um, Denny and if we still want him to, he is more than willing to.
I think he's in a very good spot.
Excellent.
They really like him over there.
Yeah.
And if he's willing to do it.
Yep.
And he's knowledgeable in what they're doing. That's great.
He fits right in with that. I mean, he's just really good.
Okay, so I need a motion to appoint Denny.
I'll move.
I'll second. Galen and Steph to appoint Denny Better.
For our four county board education representative. And roll call.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Methman.
Yes.
And Carrier.
Yes. Five to zero. To establish our regular meeting date and time, are we all okay with? We're the third Monday, right? Normally, the third Monday at five thirty?
I think that's what we've always been, we're used to blocking out now.
Yeah.
With these weird.
So basically we're staying where we remain.
That works for the principals, okay.
It's a little earlier than six.
So it'll be the third Monday of the month at five thirty. I just need a motion.
I'll move.
Steph. And Galen.
Yep.
Okay, roll call.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Methman.
Yes.
And Carrier.
Yes. Passes five zero. And then we have the adoption of the following standing authorizations authorized to waive the reading of the board minutes unless otherwise requested by a board member. Authorize the treasurer to secure advances from the auditor when funds are available and payable to the school district. Authorize treasurer to invest any inactive funds at the most productive interest rate. Authorize treasurer to pay bills, all bills within the limits of the appropriation resolution and make appropriation modifications as needed. Authorize the superintendent to employ such temporary personnel as is needed for emergency situations. Authorize the superintendent to serve as a purchasing agent for the school district. Authorize annual events on which public funds may be expended for meals, refreshments, gifts, and amenities. Need a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
Steph and Mindha, thank you. And roll call.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Methman.
Yes.
And Carrier.
Yes. So we are going to adjourn our organizational meeting at five thirty seven. And move right into our regular board meeting. Right now.
You need a motion? I'll move.
Okay, Mindha.
I'll second.
Mindha and Steph. We don't really have, roll call. Anybody object? Okay.
Ayden, two. Mather, Methman, and Carrier.
Got it.
There we go.
Aye.
Okay.
All opposed, same sign.
Okay, so now we call to order our regular board meeting of the Hicksville Exempted Village Board of Education.
Ayden.
Yes.
Jones.
Here.
Mather.
Here.
Methman.
Here.
And Carrier.
Here. We have already done the pledge. Welcome to all of our wonderful guests. And principal reports right off the bat. Mr. Altman, we're going to start with you.
Thank you. Um, first off, I'd like to, uh, talk about remote learning. Um, the middle school had a successful week of remote learning last week. All of our teachers worked hard and made sure the students were learning the same amount of rigor as face-to-face instruction. Um, I received a nice email from a parent of a fifth grade, of the fifth graders. And basically said that the, uh, the fifth grade teachers showed, gave the students so much support. Uh, they were impressed with Mr. Rosebrach specifically and his willingness to help the students outside the eight to three o'clock hours. They said multiple times their student would be zooming with him, just, uh, making sure that his assignments were done properly or just clarifying directions. Also like to highlight Mrs. Saunders. Um, she does such a great job with our ELL students. Uh, she makes sure that anything that the school sends home to the kids is translated into Spanish for those families. So they can, uh, understand what's going on at our school and even communicates regularly with her own cellphone with those families just to make sure everything's going good. Um, she was able to get all of her ELL students into the building for remote learning and, uh, they were in the library. And those students probably learned more during that week than they would learn with regular instruction because she had so much more access to them. Um, she truly does an amazing job for our students. Also like to highlight, um, Mrs. Shannon Balser. She's done a great job as our school nurse. And, uh, to do that on one of the hardest years as a school nurse is pretty impressive. Uh, she does a great job coordinating with the, uh, the families, secretaries, principals, and health department to make sure that we, uh, are staying on top of everything COVID-related. And, uh, she's always looking for ways to be more efficient. Um, she's even planning on coming to a, uh, a collab meeting with me and some of my grade levels. To try to figure out how to best handle things that she needs to do with that grade level, just to keep the, uh, the teacher's input on it. Um, our middle school is going to be conducting a spelling bee on Wednesday and the winner will go on and compete in the county spelling bee on January nineteenth. And then last, just a shout out, the admin team would like to give a shout out to, uh, Mrs. Peirman for coordinating all the, uh, remote learning lunches. Thank you.
Mrs. Kaufman.
I can tell you that I have nothing new to report. We are super busy and everything is going, is going well. Or since we're back, um, face-to-face last week and, um, they did great. Let me just keep plugging through.
I have to say, I, I think they really enjoy having the building to themselves and winning a mark.
I kind of like it too.
They feel like, they feel like they're the big kids, right?
Yeah, like.
Fourth graders are like the seniors of the building, you know, so how cool is that?
Mr. Slattery.
All right, good evening. Um, remote learning on the high school side was also a success. Um, I think, uh, having the one week at a time remote learning and the kids knowing they're coming back, of course, that's a great carrot to dangle in front of them. It's not, you know, the end and they can't just escape us, so that helps. But also I have to give a shout out to all of our teachers and support staff. We did a great job in preparing for our students prior to that in the classroom when we had them on campus and making sure, you know, with Jeff Schaefer's support and our school website and having the, the Padlet connection, the, the link on our school website, so all parents K-12 technically. Um, and students, if they weren't sure where to access something, they could go to Padlet, click on that. It took them to a list of teachers by grade band. They could then select, you know, of course, the courses that they're enrolled in and access anything and everything they needed. So that one-stop shop was definitely a major improvement for this time around. Um, secondly, um, I think, you know, educating the kids, a lot of times, you know, especially with this year, it's hard to, um, gather all the kids together, so I take advantage of the lunchtimes and I go down there and I speak to the students at lunch. And one thing we've been focusing on, uh, the last few weeks prior to, uh, the, uh, the, the Christmas break and then of course that remote learning and then a few emails here or there is time management. And, you know, you have to educate your kids to understand, you know, typically you're in the building thirty-five to thirty-seven hours a week, plus let's say you have an hour or two of homework, you know, for four or five nights, you know, you're typically committing, you know, forty-six, forty-seven hours a week to your academics. Um, I spoke to the students a few times about that and, and we discussed the idea that, you know, the toughest part for them being away from campus is their time management. The amount of Zoom time and other academic support time would probably be right around twenty hours or less, uh, depending on how many Zooms each, each, you know, whether it's asynchronous or synchronous. And then of course the time outside of that. So again, I think the kids did a much better job this time around. Our participation rate in our Zooms, if I had to guess, was well over ninety, ninety-five percent of students attended almost every single Zoom. That's awesome. Um, because I did not get flooded with emails from teachers stating, you know, these students not, did not attend my Zoom, so that was exciting. And then of course, you know, um, we want to give a shout out to everyone who helped out this time around. Uh, and a special shout out to, um, Sandy Zuber, Kristy Hoffman, Connie Klinker, Lucas Smith, and Tim Shock. Uh, we appreciated their efforts on campus, uh, assisting with our ELL population, our sped students and our students with no internet access. Because we knew that we, we did have a lot of five twelve students on campus and, uh, we, you know, we wanted to have teachers available to them to assist them. But also they needed a break, so Tim and Lucas, uh, designated their time in the gym and the kids were able to go down there, shoot baskets, run off some energy. Uh, there was a nice schedule put in place that they could access. Um, and then of, of course, you know, the LMC and, and the, the staff down there, they did a great job with our ELL kids and, and of course Jessica Saunders. I mean, I don't know what we'd do without her, so she's been awesome. Um, I'm hoping that's our last week of remote learning too, by the way. I mean, it, it was great, but at the same time, let's keep the kids here. Our seniors, um, I want you guys to know, we're preparing for coronation. Um, Mrs. Geiger and of course, uh, Mrs. Zachrich, uh, they've been meeting with our seniors from, uh, you know, the four county kids and the on-campus high school seniors in preparation for coronation. They're having practices. We're kind of preparing as if it's going to be, you know, coronation as usual, but at the same time, we're putting a plan in place for an alternate coronation. Uh, we've been discussing the opportunity maybe to actually, uh, practice in front of the students at lunch using the stage. Uh, we're talking about potentially having it in the, uh, the comments for parents and, and being able to abide by that fifteen percent rule. So we've got a lot of ideas bouncing around. Uh, as of right now, uh, we're hopeful that we get to go to the Huber or we're hopeful that we could even maybe use the, the comments to get as many people in there. But we all know that it's going to be a slow transition to getting back to normal, so we are preparing for coronation. I'm probably going to have additional questions for Mr. Countryman in the next month, month and a half about the dance, because I'm going to wait until the last second before we make any decisions. And I know it's not probably going to happen, but you know, all the kids want it and I prefer not to make a decision now on that, so again, we'll delay that as long as we possibly can. Uh, senior trip, of course, I'm getting hit up on that one. Uh, the senior class advisors have been contacting me, asking me about opportunities, and I know that they wanted to go to New York City. That's not going to happen, of course. But they actually are trying to find something that can be more outdoorsy. Um, I'm not sure how local or regional that would be, but they're definitely bouncing around some ideas. I told them I would talk to Mr. Countryman in full detail. We'll keep you guys in loop because you guys will approve of that. Um, I will say that, uh, two years in a row of having, uh, students in our school, especially our seniors, looking forward to these events and not getting them, I'm kind of a softie on these discussions and I'm willing to go to whatever ends we need to get these kids these opportunities. But I also understand that with regulations in the state, that will impact our decisions. So again, we're just trying to work with those kids and, and the advisors and get them the opportunities that they, uh, I think deserve, so. Um, and the last item, and I'm just going to mention this right now and see if I can take on any questions. If not, we can discuss it late, later. I emailed you guys on Friday, um, kind of like the graduation requirements, and if you had the time to look at that, uh, will you please raise your hand, please? Did anybody look at that? Excellent, okay, decent participation there, not the best. Um, the graduation requirements, of course, over the last, um, ten years, this will be, I believe, the fifth different set of graduation requirements. And I just want you to know that the hardest part about this is tracking and they're just, they're, they're, they're trying to, it's not a whole new, brand-new scheme of graduation requirements, but they're kind of making adjustments and trying to fine-tune it. And, and I want you to know the toughest part is, is knowing that, you know, the class of twenty-one, the class of twenty-two, and the class of twenty-three and beyond technically are on three different ways of tracking how they're going to graduate. And, uh, of course, there is no tool provided by Milwaukee right now and there's no tool provided by the state to do that tracking. They're saying, hey, track these kids, here you go. Um, I wanted to make you aware that we do have to adopt the, uh, three local graduation seals because under the new standards for the class of twenty-twenty-three and beyond, um, the students have to, of course, earn their, their course credits, which are required throughout the state of, I believe, twenty credits and they're broken down based by content area, um, specific electives and, and support, uh, classes that make a well-rounded student. And then of course, part two states that you're supposed to, uh, perform, uh, proficiently on the end-of-course exams. Now, the big, the big change is we used to take, you know, these seven exams, you have to score eighteen-plus points. We're still taking all those exams from my understanding as of today, but only two of them are going to count towards commencement or graduation, excuse me. So that's making a lot of educators a little bit worried. Um, the two right now are ELA two and Algebra one. Algebra one is taken typically your freshman year, but if you're an advanced eighth grader in algebra, you'll take it as an eighth grader. Um, so that's interesting, but then ELA two is your sophomore year. If you perform proficiently on that test, you, you meet that standard and those are the only two tests that count towards commencement. Now, if you do not test well, the, the other option is, um, you could actually, excuse me, you could actually, there's three other pathways, okay? So like a, a student that attends four county career center, um, they could potentially earn that pathway. If you, if you enlist in the military, that counts as a pathway, you know, so there's other options. But then the third, the third, uh, I guess, requirement are these new seals. And there's actually, um, instead of state seals, and then there's three local seals that we have to adopt. And a student must earn at least two seals. Every student must earn at least two seals. And you can earn two state seals or you can earn one state and one local. You cannot earn two local seals, okay, to, to graduate. And I will tell you this right now, um, some of those state seals, about half of them, no student in our school will meet those, okay? And the reason is, is they start off stating, oh, you'll, you need to be proficient in like, say, the, uh, the, the history seal, social studies, history seal, okay? You need to be proficient on the end-of-course test, okay? That's easy. But then the next two pieces, we do not offer an AP history course here, okay, which is a part of a requirement. Or it states that you must score, uh, a certain score like the international baccalaureate, which that typically could be a potential problem for us too. So there's specific requirements in each seal that you must, uh, you know, attain to earn that seal. Now, there are other seals that everyone will get, so please keep that in mind. I mean, some are just easier to get than others unless we make some changes to courses. Um, uh, and then of course, the three local seals that we have to adopt is a fine performing art seal, a community service seal, and a student engagement seal. And, and these seals, I gave you some examples of what I'd like to see done. I'd like for you guys to maybe look at those and, and give me some, uh, responses to what you think of those. Um, to me, I've worked with some other schools. Some schools have set the standard very low to receive those. I won't name those schools. Some schools have set the standard so high that my concern is this. We have students who will not perform well on the end-of-course tests, okay? And, and I, and I know that based on that piece, that, um, you know, there's test retakes, there's all these kind of things, but it's going to be a lot of work to get some of those kids to get that portion or the alternate pathway. These seals, we're going to have kids that are moving into our school district as juniors and seniors. We're going to have kids that potentially could be having some academic issues that require them to be able to attain, to obtain a seal here or attain it. And I think we need to make it so that in three semesters or so, you should be able to do these things. We cannot make it impossible to do your, your senior year, because if we have someone move in from Michigan or Indiana and they have not, and, and, and like some schools are saying, you know, for example, um, the student engagement seal, excuse me, I'll go to the community service seal, they're saying you have to have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty hours of community service, okay? There's no way you can do that, okay? We're breaking it down to where if you do community service of, of four community service projects of at least, you know, twenty hours total, that's, that's achievable over a, a school year, okay? So just keep in mind that some of these items, these kids have to be able to do in a year, maybe, maybe three semesters, okay? We don't want to set, set the bar too high to where they're not achievable. So again, review those if you have ideas, concerns, questions, input, I'll take it. But I'm thinking in February, I'll have something to you prior to the board meeting and I'd like to adopt our seals then for the class of twenty-three and beyond.
Jeff, you had said that we don't have an AP history class. I thought that we had AP Euro. It just wasn't offered this year.
It isn't offered this year. You are correct. And again, I think I'm generalizing with a lot of the, the seals that they're giving, because if you clicked on the link for the twenty-three and beyond, one second here, I'm going to pull it up. I apologize. Present. So if I click on this link right here, and I know you guys have access to it. Um, the Ohio Meets Jobs Ready Seal, all of our kids work on that in, in high school. That's, that's a requirement, so all of our kids will meet that seal and that's a state seal. The industry recognized credential seal in Ohio, of course, you know, we're talking about like four county career center. Not all of four county career centers, um, uh, course offerings or certifications meet that yet. They're, and they're fighting with the state to get that to happen. So that's a hit or miss. The college ready seal, um, again, I, I'm more focused on our students that are, I hate to say, the lower academic achieving kids because they've got to hit some of these seals. Um, most of our kids that are in the lower academic area, they're going to struggle hitting that one. Uh, the military enlistment, we usually have maybe one to three kids a year enroll in the military, but that's an awesome one to have. The citizenship seal, um, again, if you go into the details of what that means, um, it's actually, the way it's written is kind of weird too. I think you have to do part one and then part two or part three, okay? So not every year are we going to be able to offer AP European history. And who's taking that course? Our, our top academic kids. Again, so you're leaving out seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five percent of our seniors that are never going to, to, to be able to utilize or rely on that one. And I think that's my concern is just the general idea of, of there are specific state seals that we're limited to, that our kids are going to be able to get. So when we create our local seals, we want them to be, you know, to meet the state standards, but we also want them to be achievable by our kids. And, and again, that's why I want your guys' input on that, because I don't want it to be easy, but at the same time, we don't want it to be difficult.
So just a question on, like, you spoke about the community service, but that's also, I mean, yes, you're concerned about the kids who just move in their senior year completing it. But for the rest of our students, that's something that they can be working on throughout their high school career, correct?
Yes.
And then I noticed the principal tracks like everything.
And I have no idea how I'm going to track that. Um, I'm, I'm assuming that I will create a spreadsheet. Um, I'll, I mean, the, the counselor will assist in this also, but, um, I'm trying to not assign everything to the counselor.
Right.
Because you, you, if you read through it, it said, you know, athletic director will track this, the council will track that, principal will track these other items. And then we'll get together and, and make sure each year that the, that every student is on track for some seals, whether they're local or the state. And then if they're not achieving them, then we will have to find Jen Carrier, bring her in and say, hey, listen, you've only achieved one state seal so far after your freshman year. You only achieved one state seal after your sophomore year. All right, we're only at one year junior year. We've got to do something different here. You're going to have to do X, Y, Z to achieve the, uh, community service seal, you know, and, and kind of point them in the right direction. That's kind of my goal. I hope it works out that well.
Well, let me think too, just like you talked about time management, you know, this is going to be part of the student's responsibility that, you know, they have to find service opportunities. They have to find documentation and their director is going to sign off on it and, you know, putting it back on the students that, you know, it is their responsibility, just like their senior project, you know, is.
Yeah, and, and again, the, the tough part is I know, we, I mean, we've got a lot of great kids here that do a lot of great things and I know that they will, they'll, they'll rise to the standard we put in place. I know they will, okay? And some may be kicking and screaming along the way, but, but they'll do it and they're more than capable of it. But like I said, my biggest concern is at times I feel, and I say the state is creating more obstacles too. And, and, and we've got to make sure that whatever we put in place here locally will not be an obstacle to this student. It has to be something that they're, they're going to want to do or be able to achieve.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
Jeff, if you get time, could you resend that to me?
Yeah.
I went through everything and I, I can't find it.
Okay.
Thanks.
I did have someone reach out to me too, wondering about senior trip. Definitely not this fall, but to Got Gatlinburg, that was a name that was brought up to me. Outdoorsy.
Even in, in state, I mean, Hocking Hills is a pretty good alternative if we need to stay in state of Ohio.
You know, and the hard, the hard part of that is you don't know what Gatlinburg may be like in April. They may be closed down of their own accord, you know, I mean, it's hard dealing with other states and stuff because they all have their.
Said Hocking Hills, that's probably a pretty good option, you know, it's not too far.
Senior trip is typically the week before spring break, so it's about two months away right now.
Okay.
Um, and I, I spoke to the advisors and told them that, you know, they're going to be patient, but once we get the, you can do this, it's going to be a lot of work and, and I, and I apologize, but it's just the way it is.
Yeah.
Right now, so. And I, and I actually mentioned to them, it's like, if we could back it up to May at some point.
That's what I was just going to ask, yeah.
I'm okay with that if, if the advisors and the board are, um, and that gives us just, you know, two or three more months to prepare and hopefully the vaccine and everything, you know, the restrictions loosen up a little bit.
Well, and you're thinking whether Hocking Hills could still be snowy or muddy or, you know, I mean, the first of May would be definitely better there.
There's a lot to be said for the wait and see.
Yeah.
Yeah. And hopefully more things will be open. Okay, anything else? Okay. Um. So Denny did say they had their organizational meeting last, um, Tuesday at four county. Marcy Burns is the new president from Napoleon and Syndra Keeler is the vice president from Bryan. Um, they're very fortunate to have an outstanding superintendent and treasurer in Tim and Connie, plus the board works well together. FCC sits in excellent financial condition. The heating and cooling unit replacements are about to get underway after much delay due to unexpected cost. The total projects for the twenty-six units will be around three million dollars. So, and he was just happy, um, to represent Hicksville again, and so that was it. And Keith, superintendent's report.
Yep. Uh, I continue to have meetings on Wednesdays for the construction of the building. Everything's on track. Uh, I did do an email and a video, uh, last Friday that I sent out to the community and then my article is about that this week on the new building and then, of course, we're all going on a tour after the meeting tonight. I also meet weekly with the county health commissioner and the other superintendent still. Obviously, the topic is always COVID and any new requirements or changes. So I had a report that I had to send to the state today saying that we are in session face-to-face. It appears that schools have to be in session for face-to-face instruction and not remote in order for employees to qualify for the vaccine. So we had, I had to send. So we had, I had to send like a guarantee letter that that would happen. And as you know, we've been in face-to-face since the beginning of the year, so we qualify absolutely with no problem. I did do a quick little survey with the staff just to kind of get an idea how many might participate. Eighty-six people responded, and 70 of them said that they were interested in getting the vaccine. So that was a pretty high percentage, so that was good. We anticipate that happening in the next couple of weeks, but no guarantee on that yet. I met with my admin team, Eric and John, to determine some furniture needs for the new building. We will need to get that ordered before the March 1st to ensure that that is here before the beginning of the school year. So other than that, it hasn't been that long since our last meeting, so, yeah. Our new bus came in. Sorry, did I tell you that? Our new bus came in, had the wrong wording on the side. It said Hicksville Village Exempted Schools instead of Hicksville Exempted Village Schools. So they fixed that. We have all the licenses that we need and and permits, and we're good to go. So I believe that that's going out en route tomorrow. So our routes now, you know, like, we do it by routes instead of buses. So we have Route One, Route Two, Route Three, Route Four, Route Five. And all of our buses have matching bus number, like Route One is Bus One, which helps with the little kiddos, except for one of our buses. So eventually, we'll get that straightened around, but we have that. And then all of them also are equipped on our normal routes with the Wi-Fi that we did from that one grant. So I think that's an awesome thing for our kids. There is a yearly cost on that, but obviously, this year, we had it covered with COVID money. But I think that that is definitely something we should entertain. I'd like to maybe talk with Mr. Slattery in particular and and Mr. Altman as well to see how much the kids utilize that, you know? Are they using, are they utilizing it on their route home? When, you know, if a kiddo's on the bus for 45 minutes, they could access the internet, get their homework done? Are they doing it? Same thing with going to sporting events and things like that. So if they're using it, I think it's a great investment in our kids, whether it's paid for with COVID money or not.
Well, that falls right into that time management theme that Jeff was.
Exactly.
Too, so.
But we obviously want to gather some data on that and kind of see because if they're not using it, then it'd be silly to spend the money either as well, so.
I feel like they win games if they're not using it, okay?
I think you're on to something. I think your numbers are very good. What, 76?
Seventy.
Seventy out of 86.
That's impressive. I I pass off to all the, everybody that's, you know, willing to get the shot. I think that's great.
Anything else? That's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to minutes and financials. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you. Steph and Galen?
We have the minutes from the regular board meeting on December 21st, 2020. The Treasurer's Consent Agenda Items. Cash Reconciliation as of December 31st, 2020. Financial Statements for December of 2020. And to Approve the amended Certificate of Estimated Resources for Fiscal Year 2021 as Presented. Total General Fund Resources of $14,250,673.93. And Total Resources of for all funds of $19,120,356.33. Approve the amended Fiscal Year 2021. Permanent Appropriations as Presented. Total General Fund Appropriations of $11,761,763.95. And Total Appropriations for all Funds of $14,810,763.30. Approve the Establishment of Fund 300-9550, Strength and Conditioning Fund, and the Purpose Statement and Budget as Presented. To Accept the Following Donations. We have a $50 anonymous donation to each of the following. Boys Football, Boys Basketball, Boys Baseball, Girls Volleyball, Girls Basketball, and Girls Softball. A $68 from Style, Sports, and Sparkle for the High School, Middle School, Elementary School Principals Fund. $1,500 from the Hicksville Athletic Boosters for Football. $2,000 from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for Baseball. $5,000 from the Hicksville Rotary Club Foundation for the Weight Room. And $7,360 from the United Way of Defiance County for the Elementary Principals Fund.
Questions or comments? Anything for Mike? Okay.
If we have questions, we can get him a phone.
So last, the United Way was at the Books. That was great. I know my little kiddo was so excited when he came home with books, so.
I was going to say, actually, and and he should get more books throughout the year. And the money that they donated does not actually cover every student. And so the rest of the money, I'm going to take it out of the Principals Fund because the PTO always provides a a pretty good amount to me. So we're having it from Mrs. Muntzville's class, preschool, all the way through fourth grade, that will receive $20 worth of books.
That's awesome.
It is really.
Yeah. Okay, there's no other questions or comments. We'll have roll call.
Hyden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Need a motion for employment of certified staff?
I'll move.
Craig, thank you.
I'll second.
Mindha, thank you. Recommend to Approve Dave Moore as a van driver for the 2021 school year. Recommend to Approve Becca Joian, Joian?
Joian.
Okay. As a substitute for the 2020-21 school year. Recommend to Approve the following supplemental contract for the 2021 school year. Kathy Laney, Science Fair Advisor.
How are we sitting on substitutes? It's good we picked another one up.
Yeah, that was a lot. Actually, I hired that one every day. She comes here every day. So they're utilizing her as the last minute sub, which seems like there's always seems to be a sub almost every day. And there's.
We had three of them today.
Three today. Yeah, which means six at 6:30. So then, no problem utilizing her. The good thing is we've got her here every day. If my chance, we didn't need her, they have a schedule set up how that she could be utilized with one-on-one instruction.
That's super.
It is. All right, roll call.
Hyden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Need a motion for the employment of classified staff?
I'll move.
Galen?
I'll second.
Steph, thank you. Recommend to Approve Tyler Scranton, As Custodian, for the 2020-21 school year. Recommend to Approve $100 per occurrence stipend to John Adams and Eric Bassett for snow removal during non-school hours.
Some of you probably saw Tyler when you came in. So one of our custodians that had a four-hour position took another position, and so she left. And then the other one that had a four-hour position was okay. If you find a full-time person, I'm okay with not doing it anymore. So that's kind of how Tyler took the spot, so. Seems to be working out well so far. He was excited to to get the opportunity to work here at Hicksville, so.
That's awesome.
Paula's son.
Right, right.
I wondered that.
Yeah, yeah. And her husband, too, sorry. Paula will deploy here, so.
Well, I'm just thankful we haven't had to use the snow removal yet, so.
Yeah, right. Do.
May not have to use it, it's been going.
Okay, roll call, please.
Hyden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Need a motion for Services and Agreements?
I'll move.
Second.
Mindha and Galen, thank you. Recommend to Approve an Audit Agreement between Hicksville Exempted Village Schools and the Auditor of the State for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2020. The Cost of the Service is $16,810. Recommend to Approve the Annual OSBA Membership Due from January 21st through December 20, I'm sorry, January 2021 through December 2021. This would include electronic versions of the OSBA Briefcase, School Management News, and the Virtual Transportation Supervisor Subscriptions.
The auditors have come in and started that preliminary work, as you know, so.
Roll call.
Hyden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
Carrier?
Yes. And then a motion for other business?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Steph and Craig, thank you. Recommend to Approve the 2021 Board of Education Scholarship Amount of $700.
Pretty straightforward. Hyden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Methvin?
Yes.
And Carrier?
Any old business or discussion?
Some discussion, just out of the blue. Got a couple of calls about people parking, not to pick up their kids from practice, which is pretty normal. We'll park out there and pick up our kids as they're done with practice, but parking during games out in the fire lane by the sidewalk, that that's been happening more often. And I don't know if you guys have noticed or not. Have you noticed? I just got it. Yeah, junior high games. This one was specifically a junior high game because.
What fire lane, Steph? What do you mean?
The, out here by the sidewalk, here, right, right out here, where people usually park to pick up their kids as they come out of practice. People are parking and then going in to watch a junior high game. Several people that, and it's, I don't understand it because the parking lot is, yes, instead of a parking spot. And the parking lot is wide open. So I'm not quite sure. Have you heard? I I don't know why I, in particular, got it, but.
Aren't the only doors open, the main event doors?
Yes, well, okay, I'm sorry. This whole extended sidewalk up here, as it gets closer to the main event.
They're parking near the, like, today, my new door, because it's exit.
Yeah, so they're parking there, and I I don't think that that's a good idea, but I don't know how to deter it. And I just wanted to.
You did a lot of cones.
Yes, you would.
Or just like, like, yeah.
Well, if you put them even just close on that end, that might deter them to go to those parking spots because they wouldn't want to park clear up here if they're trying to be close.
I don't know how much of a cone there at the hospital.
I don't think.
Sign says fire lane, no parking from here to here.
That'd work, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't, I honestly, I don't think that that's a fire lane.
It's, well, wouldn't it be if an emergency? Or would it, is it just the one that's back there?
It's the one in the back, for sure, but I I don't think.
So emergency vehicles don't use that lane if they have to come? It would be.
I think whatever we can do to get people to park in actual parking spots.
I think that's the biggest thing, just to encourage people to to park, park where the the lines are. I mean.
We need a traffic patrol or outfit.
Well, I don't know about that, but it, you know, it would be a nice way to earn some money for the school, wouldn't it?
Oh, no.
Jeff's going to be the meter maid?
We will. We could give them detention slips. Yeah, little detention slips.
It's really kind of ironic, you know, I probably shouldn't say this, but I will. But, you know, people don't like to walk very far anymore, and that's kind of a sad little thing. But we see that with our kids, too, that they want to pick them up right there by that front door instead of them scooching down so we can load lots of cars at once.
That's.
They don't want their little ones to have to walk very far, and.
That's at our school, too.
We need, they need to walk. People need to walk, you know? People need to walk.
But they want them to go outside to recess more.
That's right. They they would be mad if I took recess away, wouldn't they?
I can't imagine people not wanting to get their steps in, right?
Yeah. While we're on that.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, Steph. We'll see what we can.
Yeah, and and as far as I know, it isn't during the the high school games. It's during the junior high games.